Page one, 2013, 502, offered by Councilor Penta. Be resolved that the misleading information at last Tuesday's council meeting that Channel Three can broadcast from their newly rented location on Riverside Avenue be discussed in the interest and at the expense, and at the expense of cable TV subscribers. Councilor Penta?
Mr. President, last Tuesday night, I thought we had a very informative conversation. And after I went back and I reviewed the tape, I think to some degree, we were misled, or at least I was misled, because I asked the question as it related, is the new location on Salem Street going to have the capacity to do a broadcast from there? And the answer was, was yes, from the manager of the station. Now, subsequent to that, immediately following the meeting, the transmission of the modular, whatever you want to call the terminology, was in the corner of the room over there. And the conversation finally alluded to the fact that on Riverside Avenue, there is absolutely, there's no Comcast and there is no Verizon capacity to do broadcasting or to bring cable in. Now, if you remember correctly, Mr. President, it was you who brought up this issue, I think some five to seven years ago, relative to a business client on High Street, who was trying to get Comcast, I think, or Verizon into the building over there.
Comcast.
It was Comcast. And at that point in time, I believe, the, in our conversation, I believe we had someone from Channel Three, and I don't know who, so I don't want to mention any names, because I'd be absolutely wrong, but I remember somebody from Channel Three indicating that that was one of the problems that we had in Medford Square, the inability or the lack of capacity to have broadcasting in the downtown Medford Square area, which seems to be pretty kind of evident. Now, again, from the conversations that took place last Tuesday night and from the information that we has ascertained, there is a two-year contract signed, I believe, at 32 Salem Street, Riverside Avenue, excuse me, and there's no Comcast, there's no Verizon there. So how do you broadcast out of, have a full-fledged studio if you don't have that capacity to broadcast from there? So what's going on now, if I understand all of this correctly, is the modular transmission, lack of terminology, I don't know the proper terminology, but is here in this particular building, or was brought here in this particular building, I don't know if it's still here, and the whole idea is that the transmission would come from Verizon to Comcast to City Hall, and then they would somehow bounce it to 32 Riverside Avenue. And I'm saying to myself, well, wait a minute, what is this, what is this all about? This is not having a full-fledged studio that's equipped on its own merits and its own location. Then I started to think about this thing even more, and I'm saying to myself, we have a concern here. We're putting Channel Three equipment into Medford City Hall. And by putting Channel Three equipment into Medford City Hall, are we talking about having a liability issue here? Are we talking about the equipment here in City Hall? Are we talking about the access to City Hall? The keys and who would have keys to City Hall? Who would be coming into City Hall? If in fact, something were to go wrong, and the transmission from City Hall to 32 Riverside Avenue? And there's a whole host of questions here. And the city has a liability policy as it relates to being a self-insured. Now, we all know that Channel Three is a separate, private, nonprofit corporation. So, I mean, we have two separate entities here running around. We were also told at that point in time, that there was, I believe, less than $100,000 operating budget, that they were operating it, but there is another budget for whatever that might be worth. So I tried to get down there on two separate occasions on Riverside Avenue. Both times, I couldn't get in, both times, the door was locked. But on one particular day, the paper was down, I did have a chance to look in, and it did look like there was hardly any work, if any work at all was taking place down there. Now, this goes back to March of this year. So now we have a station manager that's getting paid. We have no transmission, no broadcasting coming forward. We have, for whatever the reason might be, if in fact, the city of Medford is now being a part of whatever Channel Three is going to be involved with, if the mayor is doing this, I have no idea if Channel, why Channel Three would even be here and entertaining City Hall, but more importantly, why would they even want to stay on Riverside Avenue with no access to cable television, Verizon or Comcast? You know, poor choice, they've been around, they know the situation, they know what Medford Square is about, they know what Riverside was, Ave is all about, and that was a poor choice to go there. Especially being in the business for, they're not novice, these people that are working there, and they're a part of Channel Three, they've been around for a while, they know what's going on. And since they know what's going on, the sad part about this is, they've got themselves locked into a contract, for which I would assume, I would hope that they would be able to get out of, and even if they had to get sued, who cares about getting sued? Look at the time that you're costing the city. The taxpayers, each of the ratepayers, each and every cable bill are paying for something. You're paying for a station manager that has no job to do, because there's nothing being programmed, there's nothing being taped. And then it dawned on me yesterday, while we were at the cemetery, and we were listening to the speeches being made and watching the people that were there and the observants, where is all this portable equipment? The portable equipment that Channel Three has had through the years, from the thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars that subscribers have not only paid, but the city of Medford has transferred over to Channel Three through the years? They could have had people out there with portable cameras, doing the portable televising of it, and then if in fact, and when they do come back on, that they would have a whole host of things to put on, the Memorial Day service, graduations, whatever it might be. You don't see any of that around. And then we were told there's ten Board of Directors. I have no idea who the Board of Directors are, and I would hope they would come forward and let us know who these Board of Directors are, so we could get a handle on what the makeup of the board is. Then, I believe, one of the situations that came up, going back and reviewing Judge Jackson's report, that the city paid over $15,000 on, Melanson &amp; Heath, the city's auditor, on one particular year, going back, I believe it was just before or after Judge Jackson, indicated there was, on a $15,000 account, $5,000 is totally unaccounted for. No receipts, no records, totally unaccounted for. Now, I know I see one of the folks sitting in the audience, I don't know which one it is, but I know he came to the podium one night, and he said it was a combination of sloppy bookkeeping, not keeping the records accurate, but we're going to do a better job and all of that. Well, our resolution last week was to ask for an audit, a complete audit, on Channel Three for the last three years, and have that forwarded to the city, because the ratepayers really have no other alternative, but to either go to the mayor, and it's obvious that the mayor is either failing to do anything, doesn't want to do anything, afraid to do something. So the people's voice, which is at this podium right now, is nothing more than asking, what is really going on over there? You know, why would you want to put a TV station for cable subscribers for public access at a location that has no accessibility to the cable? That's number one. Number two, why wasn't that thought out ahead of time to know that cable access could not go there? And number three, more importantly, you know, they should go out and find another spot and think about what really cable access is here within this community and what it should be. Because the taxpayers and the ratepayers, as Councilor Caviello alluded to last Tuesday night, they're getting ripped off each and every month. There should be an accounting for that money, there should be a credit coming back. And the city of Medford should not be holding that money available for Channel Three if they're not broadcasting. People are getting paid for doing no work, because there's no work to be done over there, and there's no broadcasting. So with that being said, Mr. President, I think we really need to get an answer from our city solicitor as it relates to, is the city of Medford using a public building for the purposes of having transmission out of this building to 32 Riverside Avenue for the purpose of having public access cable television? And if that's the case, what is, if any, legal ramifications that might be involved? Let's go back to the other issue, Mr. Clark. Who comes into the building? Who's going to handle the phone calls? Who's going to have a set of keys? Who's going to be responsible for the equipment? Who's going to be responsible for the city's equipment? Who's going to be responsible for what's in this building if somebody from Channel Three, one of their designees comes into this building for whatever the reasons might be? That's the sad part about not having this all in one place, with the ability to be accessed in and out of one place. And to come here in City Hall now, after the fact, having, whatever the tenure was in Five High Street, whatever that lawsuit might be all about, whatever the reason why they left there, it doesn't make any sense that they would go to another place that gives them less opportunity for the purposes of broadcasting on a daily basis.
On motion to Councilor Penta, Vice President Del Rosso.
Just a point of information, Mr. President, and maybe Councilor Penta could refresh my mind, when was the Judge Jackson report issued?
It was, I don't know, August 2005, August, what was that, nine, 2009?
Thank you, Councilor Penta, through the chair.
All right. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you. Jean Martin, Ten Coming Street, Medford, Massachusetts. And very similar to the way that the Medford housing is a separate but connected entity, so is TV Three. I received the Judge Jackson report from our city solicitor. So our city solicitor has involvement with TV Three on some level. And so I think that there is a coupling and an overlap between Medford, Medford residents and TV Three. So it is our asset. It is our asset, and it should be used, be used hand in glove with the Chevalier Auditorium and with the Condon Shell and all of the rest of the arts community. And at best, and I'm glad Mr. Polari is here in the room, because he's the one that can answer some questions, at best, there's mismanagement. I'm not accusing anybody of anything illegal or inappropriate, but at best, this channel is being mismanaged at such an incredible level, that if $5,000 was missing from Bank of America, somebody would be paying for that mistake, okay? So there is no station currently working right now. We need that station, we need it as a public voice, but $200,000 a year they get, and I want to know where the money is, $200,000 from everyone that pays a Verizon bill or a Comcast bill. And it's called the franchise fee, it's on the back of your bill. I thank you very much for listening to me. This is a huge issue in the culture of Medford, Medford's ability to connect for videotaping hockey games, football games, political events, the memorial service that we had yesterday. It is part of the vibrancy that could be part of Medford and Medford's future. And why it's not up and running? If it's not up and running, it's completely being mismanaged. And not for nothing, but somebody should be replaced or removed, not in any bad way, but just because they're incompetent. Somebody is incompetent at Channel Three that's in charge. And if the mayor cannot adjust that, if the mayor cannot take care of this problem, then we need to go to the FCC or whatever other authorities have control over TV Three. It could be the FCC, it could be the tax code, because they're a nonprofit, whoever it is that's the outside authorities, because the mayor has not taken care of this issue. With all due respect, sir, the mayor has not taken care of this issue, it's been going on for years and years and years. And if you look at all of the past meetings that we've had in city council, and you can go on YouTube and find them, and just put in TV Three or Mr. Penter or my name or some other councillor's name, and you will get the Youtubes of the topics being brought up here. Let's have a respectful TV Three channel. Let's fire somebody if that's necessary, and I'm not accusing them of anything illegal, I am accusing them of incompetence, though. Without a doubt, somebody has been incompetent in this. And all due respect to Mr. Polari, but somebody needs to be replaced. Thank you.
Name and address for the record, please.
Frank Polari, 39 Everett Street, Medford. Oh, boy, this is getting tiring, I have to tell you. Every four years or so, we have to come up here due to inaccurate allegations from this side of the council. I apologize in my general discussion here today, when I'm talking about the councillors, I mean to exclude Counselor Marks, Counselor Camuso, and Counselor Del Rosso, and perhaps Counselor Caviello. There is no missing money, I don't know where you get that, but Bob, you did say something that I finally agree with, oh my God, it's been since 1986, since I've been affiliated with TV Three. And that is, we are an autonomous corporation, not part of the city. You can ask for anything you want. We are a corporation, you can find our records.
Point of course of privilege, Councilor Penta.
While you might be autonomous legally, you are taking ratepayers' money for which the mayor of this community overrides your corporation, because he administers Channel Three. He's the executive director and technically of your Channel Three. But he's not taking any action, for whatever the reason is.
So you feel as though it's your duty to go ahead and take action?
It's my duty to let the taxpayer, ratepayer, know that that Channel Three is not operating, it should be operating, and there is something wrong, especially when you're bringing equipment into this building and trying to make the modular or the transmission go from here to there. Why didn't you just go to another place that had access?
So what is it that you want? Do you want us to be on the air, or do you want us to not be on the air? I'm a little confused.
There's nothing to be confused, don't play the game tonight, Frank. The bottom line is, you're in a place that you had no right going to, because there was no access, and you've taken two months' worth of ratepayers' money that they're paying each and every month, you're paying people at work that have no job to go to.
Let me give you a little history, Bob.
No, let me give you the history. The history is this, Frank, 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 the history is this.
You know, he hasn't earned my respect, Mr. President.
Yeah, well, you haven't earned mine either.
Doesn't make any difference, it's Councilor Penta.
That's in Riverside Avenue, you're in a place that does not have access to cable, Verizon or Comcast, you're not operating, and the tax ratepayers in this community are not getting their money's worth. That's the bottom line, that's it. So why did you go there? Answer that question. Why did you go to a place knowing that there was no access?
I am not going to discuss what the Board of Directors has decided with you or any councillor in a forum such as this. Speaking of the forum, last week, you in particular, Counselor Penta, took our station manager to task over several different items.
Like what?
The Board of Directors did not appreciate it.
Well, who are the Board of Directors? He said there was ten of them, who are, do you know the ten of them?
Who said there were ten?
Your, Mr. Sano, your director, your boy.
There were not ten.
Well, that's what he said, he told us there were ten.
There were not ten. It'll be posted up on our website when we start doing statistics.
Well, how many, Frank, don't dance around, how many Board of Directors?
Let me give a little history.
Either answer the question, Mr. President.
Let me give a little history.
Mr. Polari, Mr. Polari, Mr. Polari, please.
Councilor Penta, the floor.
Mr. Polari, how many Board of Directors do you have?
We have up to eleven.
No, how many do you have right now, active?
I want to say six.
You have six. So your station manager was wrong when he said ten?
I didn't, I didn't watch, I didn't hear, I don't know what was stated.
Well, that's what he said, ten.
Okay. Okay, that's another accurate statement that you've made here tonight, I guess. That's another accurate statement you made tonight. Let me give you a little history about TV Three.
No, I don't want any history, Mr. President, we're not here. That's not the resolution. The resolution's not about a history of TV Three to dance around the subject. The subject matter is very simple. The ratepayers have no one to go to, because the mayor is not doing anything. So when they come to a council or a councilor...
Well, that's for you to discuss with the mayor, isn't it?
Pardon me?
That's for you to discuss with the man.
It's not for me to discuss with the mayor.
Yes, it is.
If the mayor doesn't want to...
We're an autonomous corporation, doing business in the state of Massachusetts.
You may be autonomous in your mind, in your mind, you might be autonomous, but you're using, you're using, you're using ratepayers' money, you're taking ratepayers' money that the mayor is giving to you because of the contract, but you have no access, there's no television, there's no broadcasting, you're paying for people that don't have a job to go to for two months plus more.
How do you know?
What, tell me. Yeah, I'm really serious.
Are you sitting there being serious right now?
More serious than you would know, yes.
You're ridiculous, Counselor Penta.
Well, tell me why you're not broadcasting.
Once again, you're ridiculous.
Why you're not broadcasting?
And for you to come down there to a building to try to get in...
Why are you not broadcasting?
You have my phone number.
Tell me why you're not broadcasting.
Robert Diamond, I will talk one-on-one with you.
Why aren't you broadcasting? Tell me why you're not broadcasting?
Counselor, I'm...
Why are you not? He has to answer the question, Mr. President.
Counselor President, when can I go ahead and talk about something else? Get my ten minutes to talk about what happened last...
Point of information, I want to, I want to know why you're not broadcasting on Riverside Avenue.
Well, I'll get to it.
Answer it, I don't want a long history, just tell me the reason why.
All right, go ahead, go ahead with your...
What's your answer?
Okay. History tells us, when we incorporated 1984, and I'll talk fast, because it can be long-winded. In 86, we actually opened up a little bit, we hired staff in 85, by the time the equipment and everything got up, it was not done overnight. We moved out of the high school to Canal Street. That took over a year and a half, we renovated the building, we gutted a building, we purchased well over $250,000 worth of equipment. We had to move out of that location, we moved to Five High Street. We went ahead and did renovations, that took approximately, I'll say, a year. Don't hold me to it, could have been 14 months, could have been 11 months. So now we're doing another move. We moved to 32 Riverside Avenue. So every time we've moved, every time we've set up the corporation, it has taken months, if not more than a year, to go ahead, do renovations, buy the equipment, outfit...
Point of information, Mr. President.
Point of information, Councilor Penta.
Quick question for you, why did you move from Five High Street to 32 Riverside Avenue?
Because the Board of Directors went ahead and approved the move, we were having some issues with Five High Street.
If you're having issues at Five High Street...
Did you know, did you know that there was a high water table?
I understand that, I also know that the city's Board of Health went down there, too. Yes, I do know, yes.
We had to move for the safety of our members.
Just answer a simple question, Frank. 32 Riverside Ave does not have cable, it does not have Verizon or Comcast, why did you go there knowing that?
It doesn't right now, that is correct.
You went there knowing it didn't have it.
Mm-hmm.
Why?
No, that's not necessarily true. You're making an assumption that we knew it didn't have it. We do have internet connectivity down there, but you know what, I'm not going to talk about that. I will kind of wrap that up a little bit at the end. So historically, what we've done is, when we've had to move, we have to go ahead, and it's not just, oh, hey, plug in this VCR, hey, DVD player, oh, put the camera here. That's not how it works, even though you have some people, a couple people in this room that'll, that'll tell you, oh, I'd have it up in two days, I'd have it up in a month. Well, you know what, it's not reality, it doesn't happen. This is the fourth time we've either outfitted for the first time or moved, and had to build a station from scratch that didn't have a station. It doesn't happen overnight. We stopped broadcasting April 1st, that was the last time we had an on-air presence. We are now in communications with Comcast, and we have been, actually, in Verizon, in the mayor's office, and in City Hall.
Point of information, Mr. President, why did you bring your transmitter over here last week and have it stored here, because you were going to transmit here, and then from here, it's going to bounce back there? Why'd you do that?
Comcast has gone ahead and talked to City Hall, the mayor, the mayor's office and his representatives, and Comcast has a feed here that would be cost-effective for us to broadcast out of.
So you cannot broadcast legitimately on your own at 32 Riverside Avenue?
That's not true.
Well, forget City Hall, you cannot...
In the event that we want to spend thousands of dollars to do it...
You cannot do it, Frank.
We can, we can.
You just got through saying there's a feed here, which is going to allow you to broadcast from there. You cannot go to 32 Riverside Avenue on its own without City Hall, you need City Hall, that's the bottom line.
No, we prefer to have City Hall's input and their assistance on this, sure. Instead of paying $15,000 to get, to get a cable drop at 32 Riverside Ave, yeah...
So why didn't you just go someplace that had cable accessibility?
Well, unfortunately, that's not going to happen.
Well, why didn't you? Why didn't you look it up? You've been around here long enough, you know the business.
I'll be, I'll be perfectly honest with you, we thought the whole square was wired up with Comcast and Verizon. We had never heard that any part of the square did not have cable.
That's absolutely not true. Councilor Mayorkas, so a few years ago, five, six years ago, brought up that issue, and your people were here one night when we had a discussion on how cable Comcast was being broadcast, and matter of fact, it went all the way to Haynes Square. And it was, it was a business person, remember who the person was?
So were you saying the whole square isn't wired? Is that what you're saying?
My belief is Riverside Avenue going up to High Street is not wired, was not wired.
For your, point of information for you, Five High Street actually was wired.
Was wired.
Was wired with both Verizon and Comcast.
Verizon came in after.
So your information is inaccurate.
No, it isn't, I said back then.
You mentioned High Street.
That's what I said, that side of High Street.
It's the other side of High Street.
Okay, well, you weren't specific, you said High Street.
Excuse me, Frank.
Five High Street was wired.
Bottom line is, you're wasting taxpayers' money, ratepayers' money by being in a place, you're not broadcasting, there's nothing going on over there, you're paying a station manager and one other person for nothing, no work.
Another inaccuracy, Counselor Penta, there's nothing going on over there.
There is nothing going on, Frank.
There's nothing going on over there.
There isn't.
We are in the middle of construction, our walls are pretty much up, we're waiting for the electrician, we're getting some wiring done so that we can wire up cameras, outfit our control room and et cetera. We have our equipment down in the basement and in other areas.
Point of information, Mr. President, have you got any legal opinion from city solicitor as it relates to the liability, if anything, and how this is all going to work? Have you discussed this with the city solicitor?
I have a meeting tomorrow with the mayor and the solicitor.
Oh, so in other words, you're going ahead, making an assumption over here by going into construction and spending money, but you haven't met with the city manager, I mean, the mayor and the solicitor. So you went ahead, ahead of time, two months ago, going in there, and now you just decide to go to the city solicitor?
No, that's another inaccuracy, Counselor Penta.
Well, why is it inaccurate? You just said you're meeting tomorrow.
We have updated City Hall periodically through this whole process, dating back since last November or December.
So the mayor has given you his blessing to put your equipment in this building, is that what you're saying?
That's essentially correct, yes.
The mayor of Medford said to you, Frank Polari, Board of Directors of Channel Three, you can put your, your equipment here and broadcast from here to that studio?
He said that to the Tim Kelly Comcast representative, yes, he did, and I think Verizon also knows that also. So we're working, again, before I was interrupted, we're working with Comcast and Verizon to go ahead and find out what our capabilities will be at 32 Riverside Ave, and to go ahead and give the same services, hopefully, that we've been giving the community and our members for well over 25 years.
Point of further information, Mr. President.
Counselor Penta.
You just used the word "hopefully." Give the same services, hopefully.
Yes.
The word "hopefully" should never, never even used, you should have been able to say, to provide the same services, period.
Well, we don't know, we don't know what we're going to be able to offer exactly, maybe things will change a little bit.
Why?
Maybe things have to be tweaked, we don't know, until we get everything built, until we get the internet connection between here and there, we don't know what our capabilities will be.
Forget here and there, you keep saying here and there, it's like, City Hall is supposed to be a part of this.
Are you, are you controlling where we actually go in City Hall, is that what you're saying?
No.
So it's you and not the licensing and the issuing...
No, I just think there's a liability issue here, and I think there's an issue that the city needs to address.
Well, I think you should ask the city solicitor.
We are.
All right.
That's the reason why we're having this discussion tonight.
No, it's not, you and I both know that's not, that's not the case.
What's the resolution say?
No, that's not the case. It's an election year, Counselor Penta.
Don't tell me what I don't know, don't tell me what I know.
And you're grandstanding, this is what you do.
Grandstanding, this is you.
This is what you do.
This is what you do, you're coming up here and making a big, big example of what?
So let me go ahead and give it to you.
The bottom line, Mr. President.
So right now, the capabilities we have is, we're in the process of building, we're in the process of putting everything together.
Point of further information, Mr. President.
Point of information, Councilor Penta.
You keep saying you're in the, you're in the process of building what? You don't have the ability to transmit out of there, what are you building?
That still doesn't mean we can't go over the station, Counselor Penta, you're sadly mistaken.
What, how are you going to do, tell me how you're going to do it? If you can't transmit from there...
Do you know that Kiss 108 doesn't transmit out of Medford?
I don't care about Kiss 108.
Do you know that, how do you think, that's a vacant building?
I don't care about that, I care about, I care about...
How do you think they transmit over their station?
I care about Channel Three and the subscribers paying for the money.
Calm down, calm down.
We're not talking about Kiss 103.
Counsel. He's not ignorant. Listen, there's not going to be any... Excuse me. Excuse me. Excuse me. Keep the invectives to yourself. Stay in your subject matter, please.
Okay. Could you ask him to turn around and finish my statement? Addus? That'd be nice, because I think you probably have other things that you'd like to get to.
All right, wrap it up.
All right, great. So we're in the process of building. Yes, we do have some challenges. We have the challenges at 5 High Street. We had challenges at Canal Street. We have challenges. The Board of Directors is very confident that we will be up and running, hopefully with the exact same services that we've always gone ahead and had our members use. We may have to do a little tweaking. We're not sure exactly what the capabilities are until we actually build out the physical site of TV3. I can't put a timetable on it. We're waiting for the electrician. We're going to do some low-power wiring. We have to talk to City Hall, the mayor, to try to get Comcast and Verizon synced up so that we can go ahead and do some testing. So just like Bill Belichick does, he will not put a timetable on an injury. We cannot put a timetable on when we're going to be up and running and when we're going to know our full capabilities. So I think, so in a matter of weeks, I don't know how many weeks it'll be, I will be here again to give you some information as far as when our grand reopening will be and the full capabilities at that particular point in time.
Point of further information. You know, if you're going to have this ability to come into this building because your equipment is here, what do you expect the city to do if you have to come in here and the building is closed? Do you expect to get keys to the city?
I've already had that conversation. We will not have after-hours access. We will have during-the-business-day access, but we're going to do it remotely, just like Kiss 108 does. Do as much as they can remotely. I'm not going to say that there won't be times when there'll be an emergency situation where maybe the power went out, something happened to the equipment, so that we have to, you know, call and gain access within a short period of time, but otherwise, we'll have planned maintenance, whether that be weekly, monthly, quarterly. I don't know. That's another thing that I really can't tell you right now, because we've never done a remote access like this before.
City Hall closes at 12:30 on a Friday. You have Monday through Friday. So if, God forbid, something had happened, you'd be down all weekend, whereas if you were in a location where all your equipment was there and somebody could get in, it could be serviced within an hour. Again, this does not make any sense, staying in a place, staying in a place that does not give you access, and you have to do, and you have to do...
Well, that's opinion. Do you have some space in your basement we could rent?
No, that's being ridiculous. You went to 5 High Street.
Well, you're being ridiculous.
You didn't have to get another place at 5 High Street. You didn't have to get another place at Canal Street. You didn't have to get another place at the high school. This is the only one. This is your fourth move, and on the fourth move, you need another place to put your equipment.
Does that bother you?
Yeah, it really bothers me.
Why does that bother you, Counselor?
It bothers me because it doesn't belong here. It belongs in the place that you're renting, that you're taking the money. You took the money. You took the money from the ratepayers of this community to have a public access channel.
When we went from Canal Street...
Not to have a City Hall adjunct.
While we were homeless, trying to buy the Swan School. You remember that, Councilor Penta?
Yeah, I remember it.
Because you voted no on that.
That's right. The vote was four to three. You know why?
You could have passed that, so we had a permanent home. However...
No.
Let me say, we were housed in Billy Timmons' office for, I want to say, about two and a half years. So there is precedent for us broadcasting out of City Hall. We have done it before. We are in communications, again, with Comcast, with Verizon, and the mayor's office.
Point of information, Mr. President. He's just going to keep repeating the same thing. So I'm going to go to another question. Your station manager last week said he has a budget of $100,000. You have a separate budget that's doing all that work down there. How much is that budget? What is that costing? $200,000, excuse me. What does that cost?
200 is, slightly more than 200 is our overall budget. That's typically what we estimated and what we got last year.
No, no, no. He indicated that there's two separate budgets. One is an operating budget, one's a...
Well, we have an operating budget and a capital budget, sure.
So what's paying for that, operating or capital?
That's probably capital.
And how much?
I don't know. We have a budget. We don't know what this is going to cost right now. We don't know if we have to pay Verizon for any hookups. Comcast, because they're very easy to work with, they've gone ahead and they are paying for all the hookups. They're not charging TV3 anything. So Verizon, I don't know. Like I say, I'm in talks with Verizon. I don't know what the ultimate cost will be, but whatever the cost is, if we have to pay, it'll come out of capital budget.
So you're saying a combination of your operating capital budget is $200,000 a year?
We get $200,000 a year. How we divvy it up and what bucket we put in, that is up to our accountant and our Board of Directors.
Last question, Mr. President. Last week, because your station manager couldn't answer the question, so maybe you can answer it. When's the last time you've been audited?
Did you give him an opportunity to answer the question last week?
Yes, I did. He said he didn't know.
Okay.
No, not an audit. You filed your report to the state. I'm talking about an audit.
We had an audit, I want to say 2008 or so.
Don't you have an annual audit?
An annual audit, no, we don't. Every three, four years or so.
Why don't you have an annual audit?
I think we have. I don't know. I'm not an accountant.
You're the station manager. You have your money managers over there. They should know.
I'm not the station manager, sir.
What are you? You're the president?
I am the president of the corporation.
And how long you been there, Frank?
I've been affiliated with TV3 since 1986.
Well, then, from 1987 to this particular time, you should have a pretty good idea how a station runs and what they're responsible for and what to do. Mr. President, I'm going to...
Oh, I do. I have a lot better idea than you and some other people in this room.
I just asked you the question then. The last time, you think, was three to four years ago.
Three, four years ago, yeah. That's not an answer in your world?
No, why don't you have an audit every year, like every other business has?
No, we don't. We have an audit every three, four years.
Why?
And now, after this buildup, we're going to have another audit. So we will have an audit sometime in 2013.
So you didn't adhere to Judge Jackson's report and her findings? Apparently, you didn't follow her recommendations.
We followed some recommendations of Melanson and Heath.
Some, not all of them.
I'll be perfectly honest with you, that was something that we looked at, and I can't honestly say it was so long ago, what we followed and what we didn't follow of Judge Jackson.
Well, that's a very interesting comment to make. The city pays $15,000.
The only thing I can tell you, Councilor Penta, is Judge Jackson didn't give us an opportunity to go ahead and ask questions of the people hurling cobalms at us. That was the thing I will tell you about Judge Jackson and that whole kangaroo court.
So you're saying that city solicitor Remley, he hurled cobalms at you, too?
Um...
Is that what you're saying?
No comment.
Yeah, no comment. I guess so, huh?
All right. Counselor Caraviallo.
Thank you. Frank, you know, I don't have the history that these other people have with, you know, TV3, but, you know, the bottom line is, you have an audience in the city that's looking for TV3.
Sure, yeah.
And, you know, and I'm sure all of us here get calls every day. We see people in the street, and they ask us, where was TV3? I mean, what's happening with it? And, you know, they're not getting, there's no communication, whether through the newspaper or...
Counselor Caraviallo, you see this? This is an iPhone. You have my phone number. We've talked in the past.
I'm not... Hold on. I'm saying that the people of this community, they call us, they ask us, what's happening? You have an audience in this community that is looking for your programming.
Yes.
And, you know, they see us in the streets, they see us in the supermarket. They ask us, you know, what's happening there? They don't know. And, you know, and it's hard for us to give them an answer. Maybe, you know, you guys should communicate via the newspaper, or I know, I mean, can't you guys go on the government channel and...
What we have, Counselor, is we do have a status up on our website and Facebook.
I mean, a lot of these people are seniors. I mean, I don't know how computer-literate they are.
Yeah, that's fair.
I mean, and so, that's a good part of your audience, is the senior crowd, and they look forward to your stuff.
Okay.
And, I mean, update them in the newspaper. I mean, go on the government channel. And maybe, you know, I'm sure you have some, you know, the mayor would give you access to the channel that the council is broadcast on or the high school uses, and let the people know, you know, where you are and what's going on.
Counselor, point well taken. I will go ahead and, as well as Facebook and our website, will go ahead and...
I say, a lot of the seniors are on computer-literate.
Well, yeah, you're absolutely right. I would urge everyone in this room, if you want us up to the minute status, you want to take a walk over at our new location, Riverside Ave, to drop a dime. We'd be more than happy to go ahead and take you through and show you everything. The building commissioner's been there, ADA has been involved and all that. I mean, we have people, but we lock the door. We have a lot of equipment in there. We don't let anybody walk in there, especially Counselor Penta, but we don't let anyone just walk in there because we have so much equipment.
Point of personal privilege, Counselor Penta.
What was that remark supposed to mean?
Well, it was just a little fun.
No, no, what's that supposed to mean?
Lighten up, Diplo.
No, I'm not going to lighten up. I'm serious about that. You think I'm going to go in there, take your equipment?
After all the accusations you hurled at our station manager last week...
What are you talking about?
You take offense.
I didn't hurl any accusations.
You would take offense to that?
I didn't hurl any. I just made comments. I didn't hurl anything. I didn't point the finger at anyone that was doing anything. I asked questions.
Is that right?
Yes, that's right.
Is that right? Well, what about this missing money?
You tell me about it. I didn't write it in the report.
Your facts are wrong.
Melanson and Heath, read its report.
No, you're wrong. You should reread that, Counselor. And then, after you reread it and you see that the city owes TV3 that money, I would expect you to come back here, and I would like for you to say, you know what? I was inaccurate. I was wrong. Frank Polari was right.
If that's the case, Frank, I would be more than happy to do it, but when your money managers say that you people keep sloppy bookkeeping records, I have to...
All right. Point of information, Vice President Del Rosso.
That's a thing of the past.
Mr. President, point of information. Is Melanson and Heath still the contracted auditor for the city of Medford?
City of Medford. City of Medford.
Thank you.
All right. Time's up. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, do you have a motion?
One quick.
Unless you move suspension. Once. All right.
One minute. I just want to say that he's misrepresented, Mr. Polari is misrepresenting the fact that Medford is not interconnected on some level with TV3. The Judge Jackson report was paid for by Medford taxpayer money. Medford oversees, Medford's mayor, who is paid by the taxpayer, oversees TV3. I just want to clarify that. Thank you.
All right, on the motion of Counselor Penta, it's his resolution.
Let's get some requests from the city solicitor. Big ramifications on the access to TV3 personnel in City Hall, liability issues, supervision, access to keys, equipment storage, you know.
For the equipment here at City Hall.
And building access, too.
Okay.
It said there, access to TV3.
On that motion, name an address for the record, please.
Ron DeLucia, Coolidge Road, I'm the vice president of TV3. Just came back from vacation. I turned on the TV looking for the best entertainment on television, and I came down, got the council meeting, so I drove right down. I hope I'm not going to be redundant, but Counselor Penta, through the chair, if I may, you've twice mentioned the money managers and we keep sloppy bookkeeping. That comment came from me, and you're not accurate with your comment. After the audit, they found absolutely nothing wrong. The audit was triggered by comments by a couple of people, and of course, some of you who have not been friends with TV3 were just dying to find something wrong with TV3, especially if it was something financial, because that would really be great, you know, for the people who don't like TV3. They found nothing wrong except some of the records. They weren't the way that they wanted them. And my comment was a joke, and I said, we were guilty of nothing, except maybe we were sloppy. That wasn't sloppy bookkeeping.
That's what you said, bookkeeping.
Well, I don't believe so.
Go back and watch it, please.
I will. And unlike some people, if I am wrong, I'll say, hey, I'm wrong. But I think one of the things that's been said a couple of times, and it's alluded to, that there's a financial problem with TV3. And the auditors went through the books completely, except for a few pages of a few things they didn't get on time, but then got afterwards, and there was nothing wrong, and they went back for years. And as far as your question as to why don't we get audited every year, because we don't have $15,000 a year to pay for an audit. Unlike most of the stations in the vicinity, they get an awful lot of money from the ratepayers. We get a small portion of it. And with that small portion, the staff and the members have done a great job in producing programs for TV3 and getting recognition countrywide. Now, with...
Point of information, Counselor Penta.
You guys get $200,000 a year from the subscribers of this community. $200,000 a year, and you're telling me you cannot afford to have an annual audit on your books?
Yeah, that's right, yeah. We can't afford $15,000 for an audit, yeah. That's right. Because we pay rent, we pay salaries, we pay fees. It takes a lot of money, Mr. Penta, and you're more than welcome to come down and take a look.
How come in Somerville...
Well, because they get more than $200,000.
Well, they do more, too.